Mayor DeLina? Over, DeLina.
... United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, would I suggest that on this side, Mr. Dan, or... I don't know. We have... Yeah. Anyway, Dan was a long, long... With the school being there and all their activities, with greater courses. And Dan was a long, long citizen and a long part of it, just want to ask for a moment aside.
Moment aside. Mayor, is it Mayor Nethan?
Mayor Nethan, the Secretary of State.
Yes, I, uh... I talked with a number of the Cemetery Board the last two years. Cemetery, the Homestead Cemetery, folks, the Homestead Cemetery, which is Monhol, like Homestead Park is Monhol, Carnegie Library of Homestead is Monhol, where nine thousand people live is Monhol. I just wanted to differentiate that because the cemetery has been going on for years and years, as you all know, and we have a board up here that has kind of been dumped on, if you excuse my French. The problem is obviously money, like everywhere else, but the thing is, years ago, and, you know, the board that was and kept dying off, so on and so forth, they kind of left these people, though, the people that are basically in charge now, living here, caretaking, they left them in charge of a mess. And the mess is, they're trying to keep the place cut and do the things, proper things, to try maintenance. The statue there, for instance, that's an original statue, G A R, from the, from way back at Civil War, as you all well know. Smithsonian thinks they have the original, but they don't. Monhol has the original, I want to make it clear. They have second, so, you know. Anyway, the library board has been doing many things over the past year, trying different things, suggesting dog, uh, burials and special plots, what a lot of cemeteries do do, you know, it orders them to raise funding. Many people wanted to be buried with their dog, too, if you believe me or not, but now, because of the lack of cemetery activity, because of the lack of the burials, they're not getting the money to, to maintain the cemetery itself. And there's a gentleman sitting there, Bill Craycar, that's one of the guys that does all the labor, and through him and Bill Chidol, uh, without those two, uh, the place going on, help with, let's put it that way. So I, uh, asked council if they would listen to a presentation, and I'd like to know, anybody from the Historical Society is here?
He's over here, he's over here, right?
Okay, okay, thank you very much, thank you very much. You know, I'm sure council will be glad to listen to your comments, too, because we want the support, we can't afford to lose Homestead Cemetery in Monhol, we can't afford it. We need to cooperate. The house itself, somebody made a suggestion, sell the house, all the caretakers and there's no one gonna be there, otherwise. Folks, for this valley, for this Steel Valley, for this Lawn Valley, this cemetery has people from all over, I'm talking Rattick, Rankin, I'm talking Swissville, I'm talking all around you, and that's where their bodies lie. Folks, we cannot abandon this cemetery. It's gotta keep going. And with, I know, uh, you had a meeting last week, is that correct, with some attorneys and all that? With that, you know, I'd just like to turn her over, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, to Kathy. Kathy, introduce yourself and your board, and to any of the people that are here from the Historical, I'd like to know, you know, that they'll be introduced to. Kathy, go ahead.
Hi, my name's Kathy Mara, I'm President of the Board of Directors of the Homestead Cemetery. And other board members that are here are Bill Craycar, who is our Treasurer, Don Wilker, Jennifer Wilker, our board members, and we have, I don't know if Wayne made it or not, but we have another board member, Wayne Collins, and another Dave Justice. They are, they're absent tonight, but we're here to represent the cemetery and to plead our cause, basically, what's going on. This is a hundred percent financial decision. We have no other option but to cease operations, which will be ceased at the end of June. The money is gone. We have tried every avenue possible to earn money. We've written grants, uh, very few granny organizations will accept grants for us. We have, um, asked for donations, we've done everything, and it's just simply the money is not coming in. Burials have fallen off, Cemetery of the Alleghenies does the military burials now. We've had exactly three funerals for this year. And we sell plots, we do the openings and the closings, there's some, uh, foundations to be laid, but as far as that goes, that is the only income coming into the cemetery. And it's, it's, it's over, because we've tried everything. And, um, the only option that we have is bankruptcy. And we've contacted an attorney, and that process is about to start. And like I say, funds are only there until the end of June. And I don't know, anybody else have a question about that?
Kathy emphasized that you are a private...
It's a private organization, it's a nonprofit, and, um, like I said, we did a nonprofit looking for grants, we've tried looking at this historical landmark, that doesn't work because it isn't a military, because it has to be a hundred percent dedicated military. If it's historical standing, we found out that someone's buried there today, we have to wait fifty years until we get designated as historical, so that avenue of funding is not open to us either. So, very simple, in a nutshell, we have pleaded for money and no one is coming to the plate to help us unless somebody comes charging in to save us or some other suggestions, and believe me, we are open to any suggestion to keep this open. I agree with Mayor Bodnar. This cemetery is a focal point of this community. Like, for instance, on Monday, Memorial Day, it becomes where everybody comes together to honor people who are buried there, people that have grown up in this borough. I'm gonna cry, I really am, but it is just so, it, it's tragic that this is happening, it truly is. It's been in existence since eighteen eighty-six. And unfortunately, there are other cemeteries that are going the same way, but I feel this community, it's so important, and the ethnic mix that's in there, there's no discrimination any way, shape, or form in that cemetery, so it is truly representative of this community. Okay?
Harvey, could it be, could it be open to military, uh, burials, or...
It is open to military burials.
Is it open?
But the, uh, the Cemetery of the Alleghenies buries veterans for nothing, and their spouses, and...
And don't they get reefered by a government or somebody?
No.
No, it is, yeah.
No, the Cemetery of the Alleghenies is government, they created that, and even if you have a disabled, uh, child, they can be buried there for free, too, so the burials, military burials have just really fallen off. And that's, we're not the only cemetery that has that problem. Washington Cemetery, where my family is buried, same problem.
I just, if you don't mind, I'd like to comment on, well, I see George Green back here, and all these supporters from the past that were, the business people and all that through the park area, that actually, the churches and all that, they maintained this cemetery, this historical cemetery. And, you know, I guess, my question, well, my, uh, request is, can't we open this up to, we realize this is a private concern, nonprofit, but can't we open this up to the public, and as I said earlier, all these towns around us have so many people buried there since eighteen eighty-six. Uh, can't we kind of give a meeting, or it's up to council, too, to hopefully direct this group and myself, and in some direction? I have spoken to the state, I've spoken to Representative Reed Shaw, who's on top of all that, there's many cemeteries going the same way, we understand that. But we understand that we're still Valley. Folks, this is our Valley, and anything that says Steel Valley or Monhol, as you all know, is absolutely, it's special. And I think it's gonna be a direction given to us, given to the board of the cemetery that to pursue, so that we can, that we, if we call for a meeting at the library or something like that, inviting all the, everybody in all the, from all the towns, I'd certainly, you know, go for that. But we've got to resolve this problem, folks, not because it's private, because it's Steel Valley, it's history right there. You have the statue, you have Civil War helmets, that all over, and Ann Ashley Cemetery, and right next to it, obviously, uh, you know, the, uh, rest of the, the churches in the area, let's put it that way, Ann Ashley, so on and so forth, St. Mary's Cross Street. We need help. The, uh, well, I think, if there's an open ear to help, we'll do anything they can, I know they will. And with that, I'll just shut my big mouth and let anybody talk, please.
Okay, Mayor, can we start, back up, get the roll call first, and then go and talk to you?
Okay, hold on, I'll...
Okay. Then we'll go to the public.
Yeah, go ahead.
Roll call, Mr. Bellis.
Here.
Mr. Shields.
Here.
Mr. Vodiden.
Here.
Mr. Brennan.
Here.
Mr. Foss.
Here.
Mr. Ingalls.
Here.
Mr. Lloyd, excuse. Okay, we just heard from, was that Kathy?
Kathy Mara, is that you?
Yeah, me.
Okay, 'cause we had a list.
We had a list.
Um, why don't we go to Carolyn, Carolyn Lindbergh? Carolyn here?
No, I don't think she's coming, because she doesn't drive at night, she didn't realize this meeting was at night, so she won't be on it, she won't stay there.
We do have another, uh, speaker or two, and then we'll allow that speaker, which has nothing to do with the cemetery, and if there's anyone else that wants to speak to that subject, we'll allow them to come on. Uh, Donna Kiefer, President of Steel Valley School Board? Where are the superintendents?
Hi, my name is Donna Kiefer, and I came here, uh, because the day of the election, I had had a, um, conversation with Mr. Brenner, Brennan, so... It was just, we were just chit-chatting, but in conversation, we had talked about Adult Ed, uh, of the, the high school again, and, uh, seeing whether or not the Monhol Borough and community would come together and help us start back up with the Adult Ed of the big high schools. Uh, and I don't want to see it just at the high school, I would like to see, you know, at some park, and, you know, so that the whole community can make it there. Uh, bears, park, we have all these beautiful facilities, uh, that we could use, uh, and so, why not Adult Ed? We've had it before, and it was a wonderful thing for senior citizens, uh, to go there and learn things like computers, um, they had working classes, they taught women how to turn on the electrical plugs, uh, to save money from calling an electrician, uh, just all kind of different things. Uh, and I really think that if we get together and, um, and figure this out, that we have a great program out there. Uh, and I, and not to, um, tread on anyone's toes, so excuse me if I do, but I know that Mr. Tishon was in charge of that, so I was wondering, like, if we had some input from him also. Mr. Ware?
Thank you for letting us come and speak at this meeting, I know you have this present topic, so I want to be brief. Just wanted to inform the community, inform the council, that this is a direction that, you know, we want to investigate, to see if we can, uh, better serve the people that are paying the taxes to support our facilities. Obviously, our main mission is to educate children, but if we can educate the community as a whole, you know, that would be a positive thing. But we still have a fair amount of work that we would need to do, uh, to be honest, but, um, just wanted to let Councilman Brennan know that a conversation didn't fall on Deb here, then, um, you know, we'll probably be, hopefully, you know, let the community know that we're looking to resurrect adult education here in St. Mary's.
Thank you, good, let me ask you.
Thank you for coming. Can I, can I just speak to both of you for one second? I commend you both for coming here tonight. Um, I know it's a special meeting, but I think it's, it's been talked about, uh, in our REC board meetings, um, we're forming a new REC board, uh, for, for Monhol, and all through all the meetings and talking with people, we, we wanted to include Steel Valley in our, in our new future plans. We need to work together on this, and I'm, I'm thrilled to see you both here. This is very exciting for me. It's not just adult education, it's gonna be, uh, recreational things, things that adults can learn and do together, and I agree, we can put it in borough, uh, facilities, school facilities, I think, uh, I think it opens the door to working together on getting the community back together, and that brings us back to the cemetery again, so, thank you for coming, I appreciate it.
One of the school teachers is also on the REC board, too, Mark Fallon, so maybe you can use Mark as a point person to bring some things to the recreation community.
So I'll say just in general, that a lot of times municipalities and school districts butt heads, just being honest. And, uh, whether it's with the police, whether it's with public works, you know, clearing our streets during winter time snows, I've had nothing but great relationship with Monhol Borough, and it also extends to West Homestead and Homestead on top of that. So, you know, we look at you folks as, as true partners, and I think that's not always the case, and that's just one aspect, I think, of what makes our area special, and, uh, we appreciate you letting us come and, you know, be heard, and, uh, we would like to reciprocate all the good work that you folks do for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Since that Carolyn, uh, Lindbergh, is not here, does, Mayor, does anybody, the Homestead Secretary want to speak and take our spot?
Yeah, I represent the Midland Towns of Historical Society, Harry Serra.
Where you, name and address?
Midland Towns of Historical Society, we're located in the old west Midland Borough, the old Greensboro area. Um, part of our mission is to...
Hello, sir.
Part of our mission is the oversight of historical structures and so on. When we heard about this happening, uh, we got a board meeting together, and we thought about if there's anything we can do, if we'd like to see whatever it is, if we can meet with Kathy and Herb, and to see what the options are. We have a meeting one day with our, um, legal department and, um, funding group to see if there's something we can do. Without knowing what all the particulars are, we can't promise anything, but it's something we would like to look into.
Where, what time is that meeting?
Uh, our meeting is at seven o'clock.
Where?
Uh, in our society headquarters up in...
Your, your Christmas, your Christmas?
Yeah, the old Christmas.
Well, there's one of us saying that we had spoken, Mr. Shields, or something, about this problem, let's put it that way, on Saturday, when we were up at the Hayes Estate, and we discussed it, and I talked to Dan Burns and a very few others in getting you people involved, you know, because anything historical, and God only knows how historical that cemetery is.
Uh, we, we agree with you, that's why we're willing to see if there's something that we can put together. And thank you for calling, thank you. What was your name? Frank Schutler. Frank Schutler.
Anybody else want to talk about Homestead Cemetery?
I have a question. I have a question, I, I'm still here, but my husband...
I mean, the others come up to you.
Oh.
Name and an address?
My name is Sal, I'm a little forgotten, I live in West Michigan, New Orleans. And my question is, it's not the score or anything, but my husband and mom and dad are buried there, and I, I invited you to go and join them, and I hope I don't die before July the first, and that I... Now, what happens, we have a stone with my name, what happens to people in that cemetery? In the cemetery and...
This is a...
Hasn't answered your question.
This is our first bankrupt cemetery since I've been here, it's a very complex issue here, I tell you what, we, we don't know.
I think the board may have an answer to your question.
Okay, you, you have a plot there and a stone. What will happen is, you own that plot, that is your responsibility and the stone, and the monument company will be responsible for doing the footer, the, the base, and putting the stone in, that's how that works.
What do you mean? Would be bypassed, where am I going to go?
Where your, your...
They'll, they'll still put me there.
Yes.
That's what I didn't know, if you close the cemetery, does that...
Yeah, they can, but that's between you and the monument company to make arrangements for them to go and take care of it, because we won't be...
After your bankrupt, though, what happens after the fact? Who does the burial?
Uh, that's...
That's what we're gonna sign up.
Funeral directors will have to do it, the funeral directors will have to make arrangements to have that.
Excuse me, sir. Nathan?
Uh, Don Wilker, I'm a board member, um, after discussions opened, the meeting with the attorney, according to what he said and some other previous cemeteries, what goes on with them now is they are bankrupt, the trustee takes care of the initial shutdown. They are still semi-open, they're not maintained, but every individual that owns a plot has a deed, that is their private individual property, they can hire through their, uh, vault company or their mortician, a private contractor to come in, dig their plot, plan then take care of everything and such, because they do own that property. So it's all done by private contractors, no one to take care of it.
I understand that they would own it, my thing is, in other words, they would have to find something to bury it.
Yes, you, you, you're, the undertaker, they would hire a private backup operator to come in, the vault companies could take care of the laying, you'd have to arrange all that on your own.
But that would be an unexpected cost that they weren't aware of when they...
Play for all this.
Unfortunately, yeah. If somebody says, oh, this ground, I'm gonna charge you twenty-five hundred dollars or whatever. Don't they usually charge a fee?
It varies, it's fifteen hundred or two thousand dollars per, per anyway.
Right.
Instead of the cemetery being sunny, it's gonna be outside operated, receiving that money.
My concern is, you just couldn't hire, you just need one to get it back, somebody has to experience doing that.
Someone to not locate the stuff, that's where the undertaker would have to contact, maybe, another, someone from another cemetery, that is how to look, look up the records.
Once you get this done, somebody, uh, gonna take care of it, whether it's the funeral director, whatever, who's gonna maintain that plot?
Because every individual, their own arrow, their family, or they hire a lawn care company to come in one month.
After June the thirtieth, the grass cutting ceases, the cemetery...
Unfortunately, all the money is gone.
There, there's been some discussion and some speculation, which has yet to be determined legally as to a private cemetery within the jurisdiction of the local government, situation like this, who has responsibility of maintaining that property? There's been some speculation that it's a responsibility of the local government, uh, there's been some speculation, as this gentleman said, it's all for one and one for all.
This is, I think, under the town.
This is a very heart-tugging, sensitive and emotional situation for you all here, as well as families that have family members buried there, going back to the papers and sprites.
Whatever, this is absolute work.
The, the Monhol Borough Government, we will certainly take a look at this, to inform the public, is that seventy-five percent of our budget is mixed spots, twenty-five percent is discretionary, meeting doesn't go by, what we have people complaining about, roads not being paved, sewers not being cleaned, now we have a very large historic cemetery that is upon us. I would hope to attend that meeting in the West Midland Historical Society Monday evening, I'm not sure anything will be dissolved, but it's still another step. Uh, it's a very difficult situation for all the families, and we appreciate, uh, the board, the president coming here and presenting this to us. We don't have a resolution this evening, but it is the beginning.
Don, do you, uh, is that with the attorney, your attorney, which you went to be recently?
Yes, it's with the attorney, the bankruptcy specialist.
His instructions, more or less.
Yes.
Okay, well, we just can't let this happen. This is a Steel Valley, this is a damn disgrace. We cannot let us be trampled on by something like this happening. I know it happens everywhere else. We're not everywhere else, once again, I'll say, it's a damn disgrace, we can't let this happen. I know council will back you as far as, uh, they can, but at the same time, there's gotta be more resources from not only the businesses, the private, uh, sector.
So is the borough, we just can't let that go to parts and let the grass go, uh, mile high without that in peril, but I think, I think we have an obligation to do that, uh, help these people who might not take care of that cemetery, if something is, uh, is, uh, a compromise or other means.
I believe everybody probably in this whole room has somebody in that cemetery, I know I do, and I, probably we all do, it's just, you know, you know, I mean, now's the time we, fortunately, we have thirty days, you know, time to think outside the box and be creative and...
I mean, to make this part of it, I mean, we could probably do the maintenance part of it for the same, probably, for the, yeah, but for the burying part, and we don't have the expertise for that, but we have to find the way.
The burying, uh, would probably be up to individual people to do that, but as far as maintaining the cemetery, well, I, I'm sure we can do that in some way or, or another, just cutting the grass or keeping...
Just so you know, when we, if we do that, everything else, we only have so much manpower, too.
We only have so much in the money.
Right, we only have so much manpower, so much manpower. It's a big job to take on, it's not...
We have on the agenda this evening to hire some youth workers, we can discuss it at that time, whether we want to expand it. I can tell you that, um, it's not budgeted, I can tell you that we will address this fairly responsibly, uh, when we get to that point, and, uh, of course, tonight's not the end all, it will be a short-term resolution, I'm not sure about long-term. My question would be, how did the cemetery get to this point? How did it get into bankruptcy? These are rhetorical questions, what liabilities are there, and other type of things that need to be answered.
Maybe a suggestion, please, as part of the board news. Kind of more suggestion is wise for the superintendent to become an employee at the borough, he does have the records, he does have, read the records, first of all, which is a big mess. He knows how to bury the people, he knows how to maintain it.
Who is he?
William Chidol, he's the superintendent of the cemetery right now.
He's one of the things that's great.
He does everything by himself, he's been doing it by himself for over five, six years now. And the only thing that he would need maybe in the summertime is to fuel the youth to come up and rewalk, to get ready for things like Memorial Day, to help maintain the grounds. I mean, that's just a suggestion.
We have to remember that, there's a lot of things, Memorial Day being a major facet in the maintenance of this cemetery.
Can I make a comment? Because you're filing a bankruptcy petition, and a trustee will be appointed, and the gentleman stated that that's the exact process, then as board members, you will have no further authority over that cemetery, its operations, or anything else. In this borough, we don't have any authority whatsoever to authorize its employees to step foot on that grounds to maintain it, even if it voluntarily wants to do that at its expense without permission from the trustee, so everything will be controlled and regulated by that trustee, that's the next step. Trustees, you understand, will determine what funds remain, how can this be budgeted to continue operations to the furthest extent possible, and then the trustee will have to get permission and make arrangements and enter into agreement with anybody that it chooses, he or she chooses, to come onto those grounds. And until this borough would have that permission, if council decides that it wants to make that voluntary effort, it, it can't do it anymore, I'm just questioning that for council, you would need permission from the trustee.
That's why a big meeting is necessary, assuming, maybe the library, maybe here, wherever, calling all these people, because it's all our town.
You know, I, I can't take credit for someone asking me a question, or whatever, they go, is there possibly to put another cell tower up there?
Yeah, once.
I know there's one, but somebody else is getting money. I know there's one, but somebody else is getting money. Understand, right? Is it possible to put another cell tower up there?
We've been, uh, that's been brought up, but not for the cemetery, uh, for other areas of Munn Hall Borough.
Yeah, we need something to fund that cemetery, that could be something that's possible.
Apparently, the cell tower that's there now is not...
Right, well, that's, it's going to somebody, somebody has, it's going somewhere.
There's a gentleman back there.
Yeah, this is only hearsay. Down here recently, there's a plot of land, don't keep pumping.
Ain't that Florida? Right, ain't it?
Tom, Tom, this is only hearsay. Just recently, I heard there's a plot of land next to the tower that's available, but somehow the tower's resurrected there now, has a, a law here, there, an agreement that nobody can get next to it. In other words, they're taking the corner on. Now, I understand also, they get forty-three hundred dollars a month from that tower rental, and that goes to the Hifman family. And he's deceased, I understand, as well as the family. And when she passes, all the family gets it. Now, I don't understand how the board of directors let this happen, to sell that property off along with the dairy, right, and along with the medicine shop. That was all sold off with cemetery property. So that might be worth looking into, maybe go to DA's office, whatever you have to do, put a tower next to that if that's possible. Thank you.
That's what we inherited.
So the board, the board gets no revenue from the cell tower?
No, not a cent.
That's a shame.
Yes, we inherited it there, and we, we don't...
Excuse me, one other note, as you're, we have not officially filed for bankruptcy filings yet. We have brought it two months, so if we do come to any miraculous or joint venture, but then, we still have to cease operations and, we don't have the money to finance anything, any more grass, kind of, the legions or title off, we just don't have the money to pay the bills. But bankruptcy won't be filed probably until the end of July, which leaves that area open. If we can come up with some type of revenue before we have to file and dictate a trustee, we still have jurisdiction to take care of it. But this isn't anything we can delay on, we can't pussyfoot around, for lack of a better word. We need to take action, or it's gonna happen.
One more, uh, grass cutting ceases, one more that ceases on that?
Mid-dension, we will be out of money, we won't be able to purchase gasoline, we won't be able to pay Mr. Tidal.
Does that have any question?
If, if that forty-three hundred went to, went to the cemetery, how far along would that get us? I mean, would that be enough to maintain operations?
If that was coming in every month, along with burials and everything, it would certainly help. Absolutely.
Probably try water a little bit, anyway.
It would definitely help. It would also, we, we opened other options, could be worked on, but that would be like a base rock, yeah.
To your knowledge, has that property, that property, where that cell tower sits, has it always been cemetery's property?
It was, a lot, we inherited the cell tower, yes, okay. But it had, yes, it was cemetery property, absolutely.
Can I ask if the cell tower, does it pay taxes to the borough? Is it, or is it still, uh, operating as cemetery property? Are we receiving taxes on it?
It says it's on cemetery property.
No, it's not owned by the cemetery.
It's not, no, they said it's, they said it's built on cemetery property.
It was, it was on, the cemetery property was sold to them. They control it.
So it's not cemetery property?
It's not, it's, it's not...
As much as we know right now, it's not cemetery property, but we don't know who actually has taken it to that.
Originally, it was cemetery.
Originally, it was part of the cemetery.
Was it sold to that particular individual prior to the cell, the tower going up? Was it like...
Yes.
Right at one, right after the other?
Yes.
We give the okay for the cell tower, it was to the cemetery board.
Okay.
So it wasn't any individual family there. They were interpretation, it was for cemetery.
Okay.
It's quite a ten, twelve years ago?
In one.
The plot of land could be looked up. I mean, it's lot and blocks, or whatever, you know? Look at the county map, you can see, who, you know, that, if that's a lot and block, and it'll have, who owns it, when they got it.
I just wanna, you know, the board, the board, like, I mean, when these people wanna buy just the section of land, how the board let them just buy that?
Some are alone, they have to subdivide it.
How'd you, the board let them have that, to put a tower?
We, we have none of the board, current board number four around the, but as Kathy mentioned, that's one of the things that we inherited, and the records that we do have on them are real sketchy.
In other words, that old board agreed anything, whatever, you walked into that?
Yes, exactly.
And when Bill Tidal was appointed, they did all simultaneously resign. The old board.
There may be one or two around, but I can't think of any. Uh, it's been quite a while, and I remember quite a few, few of the board members, they're all deceased, but, uh, there may be one or two around, I just...
Yes.
I just, I just wanna bring the council attention on page nine, two fourteen. Short discussion with Mr. Brennan, past couple days. What you have is our year-to-date income versus expenses. Income as of the end of May.
What mean?
Four million, one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars and fifty-five cents. We have expenses of one million, five hundred and eighty thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars and twenty-six cents. That gives our net position of about three point three million. Uh, the income is roughly sixty percent that we anticipate for the year. Our expenses thus far, uh, almost half is about nineteen percent of the decisions. Do you have a number of liabilities? Four, what, three point three million, roughly about one point two, that we need to spend within the next two months. I anticipate by the end of the year, it still will be tight. So we'll discuss this again in the Friday meeting next week.
We have a bunch of, a couple months, and we, we get a good, uh, initiative, because not only, uh, these things that have to be addressed, like this cemetery, the decision to be made, but also, uh, just because, uh, we'll change our...
We'll start the two thousand sixteen budget deliberations.
So, what's the measure? Can we comment on the gen ides? Gen ides, welcome. All right, items for consideration.
Okay, number one, motion to approve and accept the collective bargaining agreement between the Borough of Munn Hall and Team City Local Number Two Oh Five, for the period January first, two thousand fifteen, to December thirty-first, two thousand seventeen.
Motion. Motion for second, wait. All right.
Motion number two, is to up the number two and call a session. Number three, motion to appoint up to six Munn Hall resident youth as summer workers of the Public Works Department, and eight dollars per hour, and no benefits, for the period June eighth, two thousand fifteen, to September fourth, two thousand fifteen. I want to direct counsel to page fifty-eight, the very last page of your package. Well, number one, we did do interviews among the, uh, the, uh, applications that were submitted, and Mr. Bicey and myself did interview, uh, on number one, those folks. And number two, we interviewed. Number three, were invited for interview, but did not show. So we recommend that...
What about number four?
Number four were not considered.
Well, you got a guy who worked for two years, and you didn't even interview him.
Uh, Mr. Bicey felt that, uh, those on the, number four, we would not interview, and sets up to counsel's discretion if we want to reconsider or not.
Why you gonna think of Mr. Bicey recommending?
I mean, it's the first time I'm seeing this.
What did he, what did he?
When did he went through?
I thought he notified us.
I think he did.
Yeah.
I think he remembered it. And if he did, what did he do? It'd make people... What did you say, Rick?
I says, this is the first time I'm seeing his name, who was, uh, put in for, uh, I don't know, yeah, past, uh, council did all the interview, I don't know, did that change or, how's that, how's that working?
Well, the process this year, Mr. Voda Dan, whenever we, we engineer this, we certainly can, uh, we accepted applications as advertised in the Valley Mirror, the Daily News, up through May seventh. Looked at all those, uh, applications, and Mr. Bicey, as the public works supervisor, myself as manager, interviewed these people to determine the suitability and availability, and make sure they're Munn Hall residents, in good standing, and recognize those. Last year, we used the same process, I don't know about years before that.
That's for me to interview.
If you wanna start, start this program, you're gonna have to start pretty soon.
No, I'm not against, I'm not against the people that, uh, that Mr. Bicey recommended, it's just that, uh... I think, uh, the council should have, uh, something to say so.
We are.
We will, we will vote on each one, or whoever you may want to suggest.
Why weren't the people interviewed? Applications submitted that not interviewed?
Um, I, uh, defer to Mr. Bicey on his knowledge of, uh, the applicants and those that have submitted to, we're only gonna hire five or six people.
Right. I'm just curious, did they, was, did they just wanna show up for the interview?
No, 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 the one, two, and three are, invited three of us. So we initially invited ten or eleven for five positions, since we probably expanded that to seven.
So four just never, never, never were considered?
That is, that is correct.
I believe you get a couple of these and cut the grass at the cemetery.
Well, that was the question, 'cause we got...
We gotta make sure it's in the budget.
Yeah, that's correct. We have progress.
What are you gonna do with that?
The summer workers, just to refresh counsel, um, help out during the summer for our regular public works crew that take vacations, as well as because of, uh, back in the spring and summer, the grasses need to be maintained on our twelve different parlets. Of course, we don't have, uh, Westfield now, but we never maintain that anyway, as well as all the one hundred and thirty-three vacant lots.
Are all these, are all these kids, uh, moved in, they need school?
They're all aged sixteen or older.
I think I have that book. This, uh, this, uh, summer work, uh, I don't know about these kids here, but initially it was supposed to be, you know, kids are in school, they're offered a summer.
College, yeah.
And, uh, either that or, uh, college or...
I think we're college kids, I told you, yeah.
Yeah, of number one, two, and three, there are two that are college age. Number one, Shay McGuire is college age, and Nolan McGuire is college age, are both mothers. We, uh, did not select Nolan because he can only work for one month, we need workers for three months.
Monday's June first.
June, June eighth.
Yeah, Monday's June first. We're not close to around.
Vacations are starting, must be immediate.
Well, do you, you need a motion to hire these, or are you...
We get the motion.
No, you just gotta hire them.
We have a motion, and as a culture is in this council, as I learned last year, is that you rule, or you vote on each person.
Well, why don't we, why don't we hire the first, the first six that you recommended, and then the rest of them can be considered if we, for additional.
If we need a new one in the budget. It would be a burden of us.
If this cemetery thing's gonna take root, we're gonna repeat. And I don't know how we're gonna pay for it, but, you know...
It's gonna take two, three, seven, or five days.
There's no way these six people can take care of, uh, vacations and the public works, all the lots and properties we have, and take care of the cemetery. It's really, that's a pipe dream.
We're gonna need so, Brennan. Number two, he can only work one month. Number three, they never showed up for the...
Right, right.
And number four, the last one's from West Goodwood, and Cody pulled up.
Right. So we're talking about a lot, we're talking like the, the, the number four, six of the number four that weren't considered, probably left on the, on the board.
Right.
We'll put the six on, and then we'll...
Put them six, one day, and we can see what you do in the next meeting, too.
The next meeting will be June, uh, seventeenth.
Well, yeah, we're talking about wanting to help out, though.
I know, I mean, June seventeenth, the next week, we convene, we need to discuss this together.
Will you make a motion to hire the first six, instead of going, uh, name by name?
Yes.
Yeah, we go.
That is up to counsel.
Yes.
We do it name by name for the rightful people going on the regular, uh, street department, because that's all their seniority stuff, you know, where they're hired at. This, it doesn't matter, because we're not talking seniority issues.
He said, when are you gonna stop cutting the grass over there?
Uh, mid, mid, mid end of June, we're gonna be out of money.
So you're talking end of June?
Yes, end of June will be cease operations.
Cease operations, buddy, are meeting in June?
So the motion would be, I think, from what I'm hearing, is to hire the six recommended, that would be Brian Rossi, Jeffrey Gardner, Dustin, Sarah, Alex Legoris, Anthony Wright, and Shay McGuire.
Second, I didn't know that.
Good motion.
One minute.
Motion second. Questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Thank you, gentlemen, and the last one that we have on here is a, um, I'll read it, and it'll probably be a discussion. A motion to authorize borough manager to develop and circulate a request for proposals for municipal treasurer to offer independent, limited time for the purpose of reconciling monthly financial statements and accounts.
Do we have a cost on that? I have a comment on that, or am I allowed to comment on that now?
Motion first.
Mr. Chairman, I, you know, I haven't been here for a while, I'm, I'm really needing an explanation.
We're gonna get a motion in a second, and we'll get a question. Any motion?
Know what, what that means.
I got a motion. What did he got?
I have a second.
Okay, now we got it down. Now, any questions?
I have a question.
Mr. Brennan?
Yeah, I brought this up to, uh, uh, Mr. Cowan, uh, during the week. We've been operating the borough without a actual secretary, a treasurer, and we need to, we need to have a treasurer. It's by the bylaws of Pennsylvania, you're supposed to operate a borough with a treasurer. So, um, brought this up. We don't have one right now. So, we need to get one. Well, I don't know that we wanna do that either, and, and, and that's a council's decision on who we get, where we go.
What, you can't, we can't hire two kids, two more kids to cut grass, you wanna hire a treasurer?
We, we don't have a treasurer.
I understand it.
The state of Pennsylvania, it says we need to have one.
I understand it.
That's what we're here to talk about.
Exactly, and I'm talking about hiring.
Your bank can be your treasurer, right? Your bank can be your treasurer.
Some of your bank can be your treasurer.
So.
We've done that before.
First public, first public.
There's a treasurer, there, there is a position known as a borough treasurer, Mr. Brennan is absolutely right. In most communities, those functions are performed either by the borough manager, or the borough secretary, or some combination there, which is permissible. But if you're gonna appoint a separate borough treasurer, just understand what those duties are, and this person will be doing all of that. And that is, they, they receive all the checks, all the monies that come into the borough, pay over the, my, our borough, they're responsible for depositing those. And then they cut all checks that are authorized by borough council, all payments that go out, they're responsible for all the monies. They don't have any independent access to those funds, but they make the deposits, and then the checks, they get checks signed by council, so. It's typically done by someone in the office, is, is almost what it's doing.
Can you make like a secretary treasurer position, one of the girls in the office making a secretary treasurer?
Yeah, you can do that, I'm just saying, if, the reason I comment on the requirements, because by using the term treasurer, then that person would, would be compelled to perform all those tasks, and, and what this is talking about is, uh, reconciling monthly financial statements, so maybe if, if that's what you're looking for, the title should be different from treasurer, or someone.
Well, we need to comply to what, 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 what's mandated, correct?
Absolutely, I think, I don't know what the ordinance says for the borough manager, but probably a lot of these duties are recited in there, is what I'm just.
I just wear.
Becky was secretary treasurer, but there is no reason for us to build a, a, a.
Don't we have somebody now that does all the checks, that brings money out of it?
They're not officially made, it's inefficient.
I don't know, I don't know, they, the checks that come in, I think, I don't, they probably come to Bob's attention, I don't know, I don't know the administration.
I guess he can do that.
Well, that's another issue that's gonna be brought up near the near future on, in the finance meeting we're gonna have next week, uh, on how we're gonna be presenting all our checks, they need to be brought out to the general public, so we can see what we're spending, and where our checks are going. Uh, I'm not comfortable being the finance chairman any longer, not seeing the checks that are cut, and they're signed before I get to see them. I'm no longer gonna do that, I want to see them ahead of time, I want to see what's spent before, what checks are made out before, because I don't want to come back two years from now and say.
You're gonna have to retire, move into the borough office.
Well, 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 it's not proper.
I understand what you're talking about, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to end up coming down here.
Not proper, I'll come down.
A day's.
Not proper to just cut checks, no one, no one looks at them, they sign them, and they go.
The borough manager and the president of council looks at them.
Well, I don't want to hear that the borough manager and the president of council are cahoots two years from now. What I deserve, I got to drive, I wanna hear, clap, I'm not laughing. And then they're gonna say to my name's chairman, he knew about it too, we're gonna do it the right way, or I'm not gonna be involved.
You call me or Mr. Roy from now on, and you tell us when the checks are ready to be signed.
No, no, the, the borough manager.
The borough manager. But you want to look at every check, you just said it, you just said it.
Someone should look at them.
Well, you, when you get done looking at them, whenever that time is, then you call me or Mr. Roy, and we'll come.
I won't call you, Mr. Cowan will call you.
Okay.
Okay.
Fine, you're gonna tell, you're gonna tell somebody when they're done.
Absolutely.
Listen, let's, let's get a procedure, let's be serious about it a hundred percent. You want a, uh, you want Missy to be the secretary treasurer, move on it, and, you know, get together on it. And as far as you go, Rick, you want to see them, proceed, exactly what he said, proceed, I want to see.
I've talked to Mr. Cowan about this, and I've just, I've, we've spoken, and I said, Bob, get the best procedure you have, want to set up, and we'll go with it. But, but in the future, I don't want to hear, Mr. Brennan was the finance chairman, and he was in cahoots with the president of council and, and the borough manager. That's why it needs to be brought out in public, so everyone sees what goes on.
Rick, you're gonna hear that in the future, no matter what, I still fear about it, in future.
Well, I know that, and that's why it needs to be generally accepted, that more than one eye has looked on the check. Because we have checks that were stamped and signed for forty thousand dollars that we don't, we're out the money still.
Well, the last treasurer that we had here, we appointed by council.
Did that treasurer?
We've not seen at the Price is Right in California.
That treasurer's the one that stamped the forty thousand dollar check? That we don't have, the forty thousand dollars now, that I don't want to say who was the chairman at the time, the finance chairman, I don't know who it was, I wasn't here. But I am here now, and I am not gonna be the one put in the position, two years from now, to say, that Brennan, he was in cahoots with Cowan, who's gone now, and he's down in California on the Price is Right. So, you guys all chuckle, I'm dead serious about it, just let me know what to come up with.
Just work it out, like you said, and if that's a procedure, fine, do it, if that you're comfortable, then I think I would make a call council.
I mean, you can make it work, I mean, once the bills get paid.
That's all that matters.
Rick, if you want to put all that time down.
I can meet Bob once a month, and we can go through it and get it done.
Now, that's fun, but that's one.
Good.
I think it's gonna be more once a month.
Whatever, it's gotta be, it's gotta be done.
What about doing a way with, uh, stamps?
They don't use a stamp. Harvey signs and dance signs. Stamps are illegal, I believe.
No, no, what signature's only part of certain.
No, maybe, maybe.
I don't know.
And I don't even like the Price is Right. Well, do, Mr. Brennan?
Sign a check?
Mr. Brennan, to sign a check?
Mr. Brennan?
Mr. Brennan, you mind if, uh, Mr. Cowan says something?
I don't mind at all.
Easier to hear from what he got to.
I just asked him a question, if it was legal for someone to stand the, a check versus signing a check, he doesn't know that.
Certainly wants the white signatures, and everything else.
So, so no one knows then.
Go ahead, Bob, go ahead, Bob.
A couple of things, you have a motion, the first and second, to authorize a request for proposals from anybody that might be interested in serving as a treasurer for five hours a week, something like that. Keep an eye on the finances, that's what you have before you, before you take the note. We did retain a third party called Book Minders many months ago. We don't, we don't cut checks in the office anymore, it's cut by a third party, twice a month. And they also reconcile monthly the bank statements, to make sure that everything is properly said. All of that information is then passed on to our auditor, and we're doing the two thousand fourteen books right now. What we're doing now will be appropriate for the two thousand fifteen books as well. We have the check and balance in place right now, I don't sign any checks, I haven't looked at money, I don't see any money, I'd love to be in the Price is Right, but ain't gonna happen. So we have the check and broad balance, and Mr. Brennan, I think, is saying is that maybe we need another independent eye to take a look to make sure that our independent person is doing the job as well, I think that's what you have before you. What's it gonna cost, I don't know, two hundred bucks a month, a hundred and fifty bucks a month, depending what the proposals say, we're not looking to, Mr. Brennan's not looking to hire a new employee, but rather an independent person to take a look at the finances at the end of, of the month. So he, as the finance chair, feels comfortable that everything is on tape.
Absolutely.
I think that's what you're saying.
Absolutely.
We do have a check and balance system with our book minders right now, that's roughly eighteen thousand dollars a year to handle all of our finances, and that runs out, I believe, until next October or November.
So I thought book founders took care of them.
Book minders. They do.
We talked about this earlier in the year, about that book founders eliminated and probed that.
Okay, Mr. Brennan, uh, check on book founders, any of them, or not?
As a finance chair, yes, and I do have a statement for you that I gave you today, that will be taking a look at the finance committee next Tuesday as well, plus on the phone. I think what Mr. Brennan's saying, that because of sins past, and because of local politics, two years from now, he is going to be placed in the same position some of you have been placed in this past election, be quite frank.
Absolutely. Also, we need to comply with the state law. We don't have a treasurer.
What your secretary is saying.
I don't think the current finance person should also be the treasurer, because he or she's checking himself, no.
I can't be the treasurer.
Missy cannot check herself as treasurer.
Or then make the other one, uh, vacu.
Part time. It's up to council, it's every request.
That's just. There's a motion and a second, these are all the questions. Anybody, we go ahead to that.
Didn't, didn't they hire CPA last year to do this, not book minders, and they bring in an independent CPA?
That was initially to reconstruct everything, that was, uh, okay?
Yeah, it was, so that was just trying to redo the record.
That was temporarily reconstruction, I guess, and that was, I think, about five, six hundred bucks a month.
I have a question on the motion, motion to authorize borough manager to develop and circulate requests for proposals for municipal treasurer. Don't you think that's pretty deep, you know, what we're talking about here? Proposals for independent treasurer, we're gonna do it over and over, this is a proposal.
So this is a proposal, it's a total proposal.
If we have a rule that we're gonna do, it's just getting the proposals.
So you're gonna want us advertise for someone?
Circulate a one or two-page proposal, uh, narrative for folks to respond to, and give us their cost.
Give us, we're not gonna put any cost out there. I can live with that, I, I just want.
Yeah, but how can you do that way around the mic? It's gonna have to pay somebody.
This is a motion to do it, this is a motion just to look into.
This is to advertise, it's more than happening.
Doesn't mean it's gonna happen.
Any other questions? For the motion and accept. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
We just want to thank you guys very much for listening, we are very interested in you guys' resume agenda, thank you very much, thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
No, you see, you put that into my right over there.
[inaudible].